Okay, we'll call this meeting to order at 6:34. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gender review, I don't believe I have any amendments. Do you have any, Julie?
Uh, no, I wasn't sure about a leave request, but we are going to need it after all. And you may want to find that appropriate for executive session.
We have that on here though, don't we?
Right, right. I wasn't sure whether we were going to need it or not.
Okay.
Sorry.
Uh, anyone else with an amendment? Any none? Uh, we can move on to correspondence or visitors or public comments, which I don't believe we have any public here. We do have a visitor, but they're off the agenda. Uh, I have no correspondence. I'm not seeing anybody raise their hands, so none of that. Uh, moving on, uh, do we want to just skip right to the auditors or we want to do the approval of the minutes? I mean, minutes will take very long. I guess we'll do that. All right, I'll accept a motion to accept the, or, yeah, accept the October 6th meeting minutes. Uh, Terry's the first, Dawn's the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the October 6th meeting minutes, raise your hands. Yeah, I only see six hands, so I'm missing somebody. Who am I missing? Missing Megan.
Her hands up.
Oh, I see Megan. Okay, who am I missing then? Missing somebody.
Seven, Peter, Megan, Don, Terry, Jen. Joanne, I think maybe went to the phone instead of being visited.
Who I'm missing is Joanne. Yep. So what's your vote, Joanne?
I can see Joanne.
Oh, I can too.
I can't. I used to be able to see everybody and now I can only see Julie. Not that you're not lovely to see Julie, I just wish I could see all the tiles.
Let's see.
I believe the person that joined by phone is Ron Smith from the auditing firm.
If you want to see all the tiles, if you go to, um...
Okay, I can now see all the board members. So if everybody just vote again, we'll do this real quick. So, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. There we go. Eight zero. Motion carries eight zero. Okay. Hopefully that gets better. Uh, so next up, presentations, and the first presentation is the auditor's presentation.
Okay, Miranda, I think.
I just admitted him.
Miranda, can you access your mic a little closer? Maybe it's hard to hear you, at least on my end.
That better?
Little bit.
Okay, I'll try to speak up.
Ron, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, it took me 10 minutes to connect. That gave me a record time.
Okay, so I'll just give you a little introduction. We have Ron Smith from RHR Smith Auditing Firm with us. They've been auditing us for a few years now. And then Miranda McDonald, who is also joining us via video. She spends a lot of time here onsite with us and kind of has been dedicated as our auditing manager, I would say.
You ready for us?
I think so. That was all you got for an introduction, Ron.
So Miranda, that's good enough. Listen, Miranda, how about I talk about the past and you talk about now? How's that sound to a segue to you? So Laura, I don't know how many, you know, I've had the pleasure of meeting on that board, but if any of there, they can kind of remember the, you know, I think we've had a relationship, what Laura? Three years, maybe four years now with you guys. And when we first started, there were a lot of things like fragmented and outside the business office. And we've really worked hard, you know, with Becky and Laura to, uh, you know, to streamline things, streamline a lot of, uh, you know, internal things, payroll, student accounts, you know, the accounts that existed outside the business office, and really get the place to best practice. And I know Laura and Becky did an extreme, a lot of work, you know, to do exactly that, you know? And we're, we're, we're confident that that certainly has gained leaps and bounds from when we first started the relationship, you know? And Miranda, if you want to just talk about some of the talking points, you know, from like now, go fire away.
Yeah, they have definitely improved since even when I started auditing three years ago. Even with just adding people, they have control over grants, they're implementing best practices. You know, the, the management letters are getting fewer and fewer, and it's been a real pleasure in working with them. You know, they're asking questions. I'm consistently getting emails from Lisa and Laura saying, you know, how do we handle this? What should we do? What's best practice in getting stuff? So, and then through the transition from, what, six entities to now a single entity? And having been through that myself, it's a lot of work, but I really feel like Laura and Lisa, you know, we've been out there for pre-audit for FY20 and have started the, the fieldwork for the right, for, um, for the audit for FY20. And things are looking good, even through the transition of consolidation. And so we're working through that.
And we do, and just so everybody has a little bit of history about, I think we do over two-thirds of all the school systems in the state of Vermont. And let, let Miranda and I tell you, the conversations don't all roll that way. You know, they, uh, you know, they can get certainly, you know, into best practices, you know? None of you, nobody had, none of the districts before consolidation had a, had a deficit, as I recall. You know, and here's the consolidated district now. And like I said, the conversations just always don't roll this way, you know? And certainly one thing that I would say, and Laura and I and Miranda have to catch up a little bit before this meeting, you know, I think e-finance and COVID have put a lot of strain on all the schools in the state of Vermont. You guys are in your implementation round, and for you that don't know, e-finance is the software that Laura and the business office use to, you know, to process all the day-to-day accounting, you know, for the school system. And there's been some struggles with e-finance and, you know, and hopefully, hopefully all those things can get worked out and make some kind of a smoother transition for Laura and her staff than what we're seeing with other school systems for sure. But you guys, you guys have come a long way and, you know, like I say, it's been a pleasure to work with the school system.
Thank you. I'm not sure if there were specific questions, Chris, that this report had, or if you want us to talk a little bit more in regards to the actual auditing process. I'm getting a lot of background, I'm not sure why. Is anybody else getting background?
Yes.
I'm not sure why that is. Um, Ron or Miranda, you don't happen to have two sessions open, do you? Are you on on your phone and your computer by any chance?
No, I shut mine off, Laura.
Oh, that seems to be a little better now. Um, so what I was saying, Chris, is I'm not sure if the board has more specific questions or if you want Miranda and Ron to speak a little bit more to the process that happens when they come to audit us? Or if anyone else has questions?
I'm not, oh, Dawn raises his hand. Go ahead, Dawn. You're muted, Dawn.
I certainly would like to hear the process. I have two or three questions. I don't think they're all that significant, so I would rather get a chance to see how it's really going through the whole process, timeline type of thing.
Yeah, you, uh, so somewhere about May or June, we start pre-audit. And right about now, we're actually doing fieldwork, working with Laura and her staff to do the audit. And just to let you know what the process is, the state of Vermont, you know, requires your school system to have an annual independent audit done by a qualified licensed firm, which we are. So what Laura will do is she maintains the whole accounting system for the, for the district. You know, we'll, we'll ask her for reports, and based on those reports that we get from Laura, we'll subject them to the, basically the general fund ballot, the general fund of the district, all the grants and contracts of the district, various scholarships that you have, any other special revenues or earmarks that you may gave, get from the state, from Vermont, or from local resources, you know, and student accounts. So we look at the whole district, built basically, uh, school-wide, building to building-wide, you know, so that we can issue an opinion on your financial statements. And when we're done this year, you will get a consolidated financial statement for all the school districts. And, uh, we'll actually present that, I'll assume Laura, at a future board meeting, you know, with your board. And then that, uh, that will get submitted to the Agency of Education, and it happens all over again next year. It's done every year, so. And if, and if through that process, if we find any issues, have any management letter comments, as Miranda says, we'll issue a management letter, and all those are the things that we'll go over with you as a board, so.
I can say one of the things that's been really beneficial in this process is the pre-audit that RHR has been doing. Typically, the site work and the kind of pre-audit, it all happened at once prior to this, working with RHR. And I think, you know, we really benefit from doing a lot of that legwork earlier and asking a lot of those questions proactively earlier on in the year, rather than waiting until we've completed the year and then realize that maybe we had some issues or some questions that went unanswered or unresolved. So I can say for us, and not only that, it's also just bandwidth and manpower. You know, it allows us to kind of allocate those resources earlier on in the year, rather than again, like at the end of the fiscal year, you know, trying to start a new fiscal year when we just don't have time to do that and allocate. So, um, I can say that's been very beneficial, the pre-audit being so thorough.
Yeah, and as Laura said, this, you know, the process, you know, may, maybe three days during pre-audit, you know, it may be, you know, a week during audit, and then all the time in between and at the end to actually deliver you a product. But it's a 365-day-a-year relationship is the best way I can say it with communication.
Chris, Ron, uh, it's now October 2020. We're talking about the books that closed about 15 months ago. I know with the consolidation and everything on our plate, it was really challenging. But when do you see us getting the first audit of the Mesiskoy Valley School District in a presentation like tonight?
Miranda, when do you have that on your docket for? December?
Uh, December, January, yep, depending, in, there's, you know, like we said, there's...
After budget, after budget season, right?
Yeah, we can do after budget, absolutely.
No, I just, I just checked one because we're going to be pretty busy during November, December, and probably January, getting this budget ready for the voters in March, so. But I was just trying to get a sense of the timeline. That's good. I do have some specific questions, and I don't know, Laura, I don't want to have two devices because then I create problems with the sound, but, uh, I went, on page 39, I had a question. I think I know the answer, but I don't want to guess what it is. But it's, uh, I believe it's a loan with the People's Trust. Must be an equipment item.
Do you know which audit it was in, Dawn? The page 39?
MVU.
Okay, is that something you want me to... Is that something you want me to answer now, or do you want us to email or call for that?
Uh, if you can answer real quick, like if you can get to page 39.
Okay, let me get to the MVU audit. Hold on one second.
So Miranda, in general though, when you, in terms of timeline, the fiscal year ends June 30, and then you come in and begin your audit for that closed year in August?
It depends on, um, timing, scheduling, and how soon Laura feels like the business office has closed their books and is ready for us to come in. Like we said, we do the pre-audit in the springtime, so we commit some processes and some controls. And then, um, we, you know, we try to wait to get, make sure we don't come in too early. Make sure the books are closed, they're, um, as good as they're going to be. They're able to get like the Student Activity Fund app to the business office for us. So, um, there is a lot that goes into us being here onsite. My, this year, we were there in September.
Last week of September, first week of October, yep.
First week of October, so, and just because we were onsite, yes, that was fieldwork, but, um, you know, we're, we're still in the, in the process of, of working through the audit to get the first draft.
And Julie, believe it or not, we've probably got a half a dozen school systems that don't even want to see us because of this pandemic. Their business offices are shut down, you know, to the public, and that's made this a real difficult year to audit, let us tell you that. So, really difficult.
So you'll have the draft, and the board should be ready to accept, um, that FY20 budget in December, you think?
We'll have the draft. I, I think we'll be working with Laura on that draft and as far, as far as we can turn it around from December. Yeah, I think that's a fair expectation, Julie.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify for the board members that had some questions.
My experience is if you get it six months after you close your books, that's really very timely.
Yeah.
And I can tell you, especially this first year with the merger, I mean, I'm not sure how many journal entries we had, but it was a lot more, very atypical and exceeded anything I've ever seen before just due to the chart of accounts and all the changes we had to make. So, um, that doesn't make auditing a lot easier, by any means.
And just, and just so everybody's aware, you actually have till March 31st from the Agency of Education's deadline, March 31st, to submit that audit.
Yeah. So Dawn, to answer your question, um, on page 39, I think you're talking about the $24,128 to People's Trust.
Right.
That's the, one of the driver's ad cars.
Okay, I thought maybe, also on that page, I think the bond, is the bond interest on that page? 39 or 40? I had never seen it written that way, uh, and maybe it's just oversight, but it shows a, a range on an interest rate on the bond.
It's because the range on the interest rate, it does change. Our, if you look at our amortization schedule, it's not, it, it does fluctuate over the course of the 20 years. So the average is what they give us typically.
Okay, and what drives that? Is it prime? Are we off, are we based off so many points off or above or below prime?
Uh, I think there's a lot of things that go into that. I'd have to have Michael Bond from, uh, Bond from the bond agency probably answer everything that goes into setting those rates.
Because it's quite a difference between 1% and 4% of like that.
I can, I can ask him for that information if you'd like it. I can have him write us a little narrative about why, why that is.
I'm just curious because I know that Highgate has a bond coming on in this next budget, right?
But our rate is already set for that.
Okay, all right.
And I think it's, it's below, uh, it's right around 3%, actually. I'd have to look. I can email that to you, but it's right around 3%.
Laura, was that one of the Q-SAB or QZAB bonds, do you know? That could explain the fluctuation. Was it, Miranda?
No, it's a, it's a Vermont municipal bond.
Yeah.
It's a, over the course of 20 years, so I think, you know, what we, what I tell you and what we're promised is an average, but I think that's why they show that rate there.
Sure.
The range, I mean.
And I, I have other questions, but I think that they're probably not relevant to tying up this meeting. But one for Rick and Miranda, I was on the MVU board when we did a bond project. I think I'm the only member from that board now on this board. And, uh, I've tried to kind of get a handle on, we had a $2.9 million bond. Well, what was the total expenditure? Because we use capital reserves and other monies. And I don't know if that would show up in an audit report or not. It might have to be tracked over about three years.
Dawn, I guess I just don't understand the question. Are you looking to, to see what the total cost of that borrowing was?
Yes.
We could easily get that for you. And Laura, if you want to just get what bond, you know, that Dawn's talking about, we can get that information. That'd be very easy.
Is that what you're talking about, Dawn, or are you talking about the expenses?
I'm talking about, well, I'm talking about how much money was really spent on items that we proposed to the taxpayers in the bond, uh, because we did have some additional costs come in. Uh, and I know we used some of our capital reserve. So I'm looking at both the charges, but also the total, the total expenditures for that construction project.
Sure, I can give you a report over the course of three years, exactly what was spent. There's about $3,000 left in that right now that we are, um, you know, just cleaning up. Um, but yeah, that's an easy report to pull. And then if Ron could help out with the other piece, that'd be great.
Yeah, Laura, let us know. Let us know. We'll, we'll fill in the blank.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anytime.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any, so thank you very much for presenting.
Laura, we'll talk soon. You guys, I'll...
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good evening. Okay, next up is the elementary administration updates. I guess we'll start with Highgate.
All right, good evening, everybody. Hope you're doing well. Um, I'm sure obviously you saw our board report, but I think what I really want to kind of focus on is our, uh, our big news is kids have come back more fully in person with kindergarten and first grade. And I think, uh, it's been wonderful, I think, for the teachers to have the kids back because the hybrid model, uh, it's starting to wear on our teachers. And they're definitely getting very stressed by the workload because it really is a lot. I think I've been very proud of the work that they've done and, you know, one thing I've been amazed by is that we know we have very stressed teachers, but when you walk into classrooms, kids have absolutely no idea how stressed they are. And I think it's an amazing testament to them just because I couldn't imagine, you know, they're doing something they don't necessarily know how to do, and they're doing it, and they're doing it very well. So that's been really wonderful that it feels like culturally we're still, you know, doing pretty well. Uh, I think also, you know, we did have some concerns. When you have littles back, they're going to get close to each other, and they're going to be really excited because they're friends that they knew were in their class they haven't seen yet. And that is exactly what we've experienced the past couple of days. So I think our teachers are exhausted from trying to get those cute little kids to stop touching each other or getting close, but overall, it's been very good. We actually tonight had a training from one of our teachers, Kira Barrett, about, you know, anticipating things we're worried about, how can we build rules, our routines and procedures? And then broke up into some nice, you know, grade band groups and said, hey, what are some things we have to think of? And I think that was really helpful because teachers even thought about making traffic patterns, like literally putting arrows on the floor, you know, marking off certain spots on the floor that are away from their desks. But I think originally, when this all went down, I was, I was very hopeful that we could get all of our kids and be six feet apart. And then you get kids in there and you realize we cannot get them six feet apart. So I think, you know, we're lucky the guidance did say three to six. But I think overall, uh, we're doing pretty well. We also are, you know, been able to have students be pulled out for services, if that's, you know, been deemed appropriate for them. At Highgate, I've really had, asked teachers to avoid it just because the idea of having kids moving around a lot was something I was a little uncomfortable with, but we've done well. Data has shown we've done well. So it's been good that some kids are being pulled out and they're really getting a little more of the services that they really need because doing it in the classroom, there are lots of distractions and it doesn't always work out. Um, I think otherwise, temperature checks have been doing well. We're seeing, uh, lots of work out and lots of, you know, on bulletin boards, just seeing all the work students are doing. So in a sense, it's nice that we do feel a little bit of normalcy in that sense with having all the kids there. But, um, I think it's been nice keeping the virtual Wednesdays so that way, as grades are ready to start fully in person, teachers can really focus on preparing their classrooms because that was actually a lot more work than I think we anticipated, really setting up the classrooms to make sure it would, uh, it would flow, as I said. So I think we're in a good place. And I can't really think of anything else to throw out there, Chris. Is there anything you want to add?
Uh, no, I think you covered a lot of it, Yeshua. I think the most important thing, the most important theme is that, yes, our teachers are incredibly stressed, but that students are not keyed into it because teachers have done a really good job, uh, kind of compartmentalizing that. So you hit, you hit everything that I would want to say.
Okay, great. So I think, yeah, that's it from Highgate.
Thank you. Uh, how about, we'll go with Franklin next.
I wasn't ready. Okay, all right. So I agree with everything that Yeshua said. I guess everything's just been continuing to go very smoothly. Now everybody's all used to the hybrid, and we'll get ready to have everybody back. And, uh, but that's a really good thing, as Yeshua said, because, uh, teachers are, you know, planning for remote, planning for in-person, and, you know, it's really double duty. One thing I've been really happy about is as hard as everybody's working, people have been really, um, okay about really still trying to do those extra things for kids that are important to kids, like our Fun First Friday. We didn't have it on Fun First Friday, but that's always been something the kids have loved. And our school-wide walking program got to Boston. And so a small group of people, Nancy Wilson and, um, Jen McConnell, Doug Young, and Christine Miratore and Alita, figured out how to do it still, you know, because we couldn't share materials and, you know, six feet apart and blah, blah. And instead of just saying, oh, it's too hard, you know, we're doing too much, you know, people just jumped in and figured out how to do it. And so we had a fun Thursday and Friday because of the hybrid model, and kids learned about Boston, and we just had a great time. Um, also, our virtual back-to-school night, we tried to keep that as similar as we could to what we've always done. So the Boy Scouts, um, recorded themselves presenting the colors and helping us recite the pledge. And we still had our movie of last year's memories. And teachers still did a 15-minute presentation from their classrooms about what was happening in their classrooms this year. October, September are really busy with assessments, and so you'll see the list of all the different assessments that have been going on. And we'll be looking at those to look at strengths and needs of individuals, um, classes, looking at trends. Late October and early in November, teachers have been starting to put into practice some of the things that we had trainings on this summer and this past fall. That training we had on executive function skills. Every faculty meeting, I'm putting that on the agenda, SEL and executive function skills, because it can be the best training in the world. And yet, when you get into that day-to-day, every, you know, getting ready for classes every day, you can lose sight of some of the things that you wanted to try. And so we keep sharing what are things that people have tried around those trainings. And that's been really, I think, very helpful to people. Um, I have a big shout-out for the flu clinic. We had a lot of people get vaccinated. Oh, somebody's trying to get hold me. I'm really pleased with the amount of meals that people have been picking up. In small Franklin, we've been averaging 180 meals a week, um, going out to families. And I, just a huge shout-out about that to Jen and Carolyn. Our virtual Crossroads program, I know there's been some concern about that being virtual. And we still have 40% of our kids signed up. And, you know, every cloud has a silver lining because, like, Hunter Safety, we haven't offered for a while because we didn't have someone who was able to come to Franklin. Um, and we've, now we've done it virtually, and I think seven out of the 14 kids signed up for Hunter Safety or from Franklin. And it's just so great to have that program back again. I have to kind of change my brain from tractors and snow removal here. One thing I wanted to mention was we are still looking to fill a custodial position, so I wanted to mention that in case anybody watching the recording. I also wanted to mention, it was just so wonderful, and Justina, I know you'll agree with this, to see kids using the playground structure again, um, I, it just gave me goosebumps. Seeing kids out there using that structure, it was just so wonderful. And I just have to say a huge thank you and just how grateful I am to have a nurse every day at our school right now. We start getting phone calls from parents a few minutes after 7:00, um, from parents wanting to check in about symptoms of kids, staff checking in about things, all day long. Alita and I are talking about, okay, if we want to do this, what would be safe? You know, what are the mitigation strategies we have to use for this? And I, I just don't know how we would be going through this. And Alita's, you know, assessing kids all day and talking to parents, and, um, I, I don't know how we would be doing this. um, I, I don't know how we would be doing this without having a nurse every day. And I'm sure all the other principals feel the same way about the nurses in their building. Um, it is just, just been such a godsend to have Alita there every day. And I am so, so grateful. And again, just really excited about getting the rest of the kids back and, and um just thankful for that. And hopefully we can keep having all these good uh low positivity rates in Vermont. And I just watched a tiny bit of the news and I got all worried, so I turned it off. But anyway, so that is my report. And I put a few upcoming activities on there and uh, but anyway, thank you so much.
Chris.
Don, go ahead.
I don't know if Joyce or Justina or somebody answers, but with our playgrounds, we're now using them, what type of precautions do we have to take? As far as.
Yep. So in step three, Don, it just says routine cleaning, which Julie has said means rain. Um, but Julie, I'm like, I don't believe I just said that. But we are, um, we are sanitizing, um, but truly it does say just routine cleaning. Um, but we have started very slowly, you know, we don't want to overdo anything. We're scheduling each class to use it. Um, one class is using it a day. Um, so we are definitely uh taking precautions and starting slowly. I think in the new guidance that comes out though, at least what I'm hearing from the Nurses Town Hall meeting, um, there's going to be some changes around. You know, they're really saying now it's not all about touching things, you know, it's more the aerosol and so I think there's going to be changed, more changes around it, but we definitely are still starting slowly and taking precautions. If you see that little picture I put in my report, it only had like five kids on it at one time. And they're washing their hands before and washing their hands after.
My, my question.
That's the main thing. I just, I just need to respond to Joyce's uh, uh, rain uh comment. The uh, the guidance that came out, we were all asking what that meant. And we were asking, you know, what is it, what is routine? It just meant what you usually do. And people were saying, what, how do you usually clean your playground equipment? How do you usually play your playground equipment and clean it? And basically it's, you know, some people will hose it off or whatever if uh, there's something that gets on it, but essentially uh, the biggest thing we can do and what we're driving home is the hand washing routines before and after, not mixing kids on the playground equipment, um, and making sure that we have some kind of tracking so that I know on a Tuesday, what group of kids was on which structure? So that uh, if there's an ever an issue of contact tracing, we know. Those are the main.
We are, yeah, we are spraying it because our morning recess, um, one grade from the lower grade uses it. And then after that grade is out there, we use the electrostatic sprayer, which sprays like 20 feet. And we are spraying it before the fifth, fifth or sixth grade uses it.
The reason for my question was that I believe most of our playgrounds are open to the public and I just wondered if every day before we started using them, if we had to sanitize them since. I know at least in Swanton, and I haven't been by there this week, but I get by there maybe once a month, you see people there and I'm just wondering, you know, if, if teenagers are in there at night uh, or families are in there at night and then the kids come and use it in the morning. So it was just a question. I don't have any idea what to do. I was curious, was there any requirements?
While our playgrounds were, and I know Justina um would probably have more to say, but while our playgrounds were closed, we had signs up uh that made it clear to the community that we were not cleaning and sanitizing the playground equipment and that, you know, people were, it did, the signs didn't say use it at your own risk, but that, that was what was clear. Um, so we always had the public using them. They are community. Um, in Swanton, because of how it's placed, you can't gate it off or anything like that. But uh, that's why Deana and Justina have been particularly careful with um making sure they have routines in place before kids are allowed to use the playgrounds. They're only just going to be starting, really.
Uh, with that, how about uh Swanton?
Okay, going last means that we just say ditto to everything our colleague said, so that's easy. Um, but just jumping on staff has been incredible. And I think as a board, um, I know Justina and I are very, very appreciative and proud of them. As Yeshua said, they've been living in two worlds and it's been really, really tough for them. Um, walking around our buildings right now feels really nice because of the smallness of our classrooms and the structures, that feels good. But the teachers are really looking forward to all of the kids coming back and, and I think we're ready. Um, I know our families are ready as well. Um, I'm going to let Justina talk a little bit about our kindergarten coming back and then I'll let you know a little bit about our biggest challenge that we've been um facing and trying to get back. So Justina, why don't you talk about those little K kids?
Um, so our, our K's did come back this week and it's gone um really, really well. Um, having the playground open is another big bonus. Um, the, the biggest hurdle, I mean, we were prepared for the K's, this staggered kind of starting has been really helpful, so we can kind of concentrate our efforts and our supports with different grade levels each week. Um, the worry that we had talked about before here was our dismissal system in Babcock because we have some larger grade levels in that building. Um, and we opted to push back K dismissal a bit. So we, we have two separate car lines now. Um, at 2:35, our ones and twos are dismissed. And then about 2:55, that car line ends. We have a couple minutes of no cars and then our K families are coming through um for a second car line right around 3 o'clock. So we broke up those car lines into two groups and it's worked out really, really well. So we are no longer backed up into the street. Um, which when we were, it was just momentary, um, but knowing with more people coming back, it would be much longer. So um, we are happy about that and the parents have been really good about it. Um, and we're kind of continuing to work on our first grade classroom um, in the Babcock building, but that's, that's kind of it for our K's coming back. It's just really good to walk by and see a full classroom, really.
Um, those K teachers have done a phenomenal job. They have like little tape around the kids' desk. And um, so that's kind of their area and then they have um a uh little pad on the side, so they, just because of the movement, just letting those kids move. Um, a lot of them have wiggle cushions too, which is very appropriate in K. So um, as Justina said, just having them all back is good. We deviated a little bit. Your elementary principals worked together to have um a phase in with getting everyone back. In Swanton, Julie worked um very hard with us. Our numbers in first grade were very, very high. And if you may remember, we had created five first grade classrooms to um hold those kids. We lost a total of four teachers this year to our, our virtual academy, so we thought at the beginning that would be okay, we would problem solve along the way. Um, and everything was really good when we were only half and half, but then the thought of bringing everyone back. Right now, those full first grade classrooms, if we had remained at four, would have held 21 or 22 kids. While that doesn't sound unreasonable, we physically couldn't fit them into the rooms. Um, we're nowhere near six feet. We're lucky, as Yeshua said, we're doing the best we can at about three. So in order to do that, in fairness to, one, finding a teacher and families and kids, Julie okayed the fact that that, that grade level would not come back for a full week until November 9th. So that gave us longer to plan. We, I think we've communicated really well with our families. I, I'm proud of that. We had a, a virtual meeting just before this to introduce our, our new class. Um, hats off to Mel Berthium. Mel Berthium is our current librarian, but because of this, her um her role has been greatly diminished. So she is going to be our new first grade classroom teacher. Um, she handled that decision very graciously, um, because it wasn't in her plan. It wasn't in our plan either. Um, for those of you who don't know, Mel has been a kindergarten teacher with us and a second grade teacher, so it's not like it's the first time in her classroom. I think after she got over the initial shock, she started getting excited. Um, she's been wonderful in reaching out to families, meeting kids already. We have a very specific transition plan slowly. She's meeting with Deb and Jess to get that content and curriculum under control, so I would never wish on anyone to have to create a new classroom in the middle of the year because it's really hard. Um, one thing that made it easier, so to speak, we had five classrooms placed at the beginning of the year. We spent a lot of time in the spring on our placement. So then when we went from five to four, we kind of divvied those kids up among the other four. So to make it easier, we just recreated that fifth classroom. That way it wasn't like picking and choosing this kid or saying, oh, Johnny's very resilient, he'll be okay with this change or, you know, this family doesn't care. None of that. You know, we really tried to, um, to go back to that. And for, I think 99.9% of our families, they've been appreciative and understand and are somewhat excited to come back. So we appreciate Julie letting us have that extra time. Um, I think we're going to be ready for them and do a nice job with transition. Next week, second and third grade comes back and as either Yeshua or Joyce said, those Wednesdays have been incredible because those teachers aren't using it really for planning time on Wednesdays. They're always doing their kid morning meeting. But they're actually getting their rooms reset up, taking more stuff out. Um, we are still waiting on desks and, and they were supposed to ship today, so hopefully they'll make that timeline. Um, Jason and his crew have been, you know, bringing sixth grade desk over to kindergarten. They lowered them, so, so we're going to be okay. We'll have plenty, plenty of desks once they get here. Um, positive things, I just need you to know, our unified arts classes, we talked a little bit about how they don't have a gym, they're not in the art room, they're not in the music room, but they are phenomenal. I think I mentioned, um, Jenny Jacobson is doing an outdoor mural. Um, Rain or Shine, she's under the leaves and it's beautiful. Um, Amy Topping, our music teacher, is taking those kids outside as much as she can to sing. Greg and Dylan, it's like they're in there in the rain and the wind and the, the kids are loving it. Today they had to be inside, which was really hard. I was teaching a class and Greg had a class next door and they must have been kicking a ball or something because it just kept hitting the wall and bouncing all over. So we'll see, we'll see how PE indoors continues to go. Um, Gianna Messier instrumental is doing a virtual little um concert for her kids, so they actually can perform. So, you know, you're making the best out of what you've got, but I agree with our colleagues, they're just really excited to kind of be on one road. And I think that will be good for kids too. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, any questions for any of the principals? Seeing none, uh, thank you very much for your reports and we'll move on to next on the agenda, which is new business. And then the first uh new business is the Franklin Central School Snow Plowing Bid, which we'll award a bid tonight, or maybe not. So uh, I believe uh Joyce is bringing forth a recommendation that Steve and, and Joyce figured out.
I was just going to talk a little bit about process, um, so everyone understands what we do, if that's okay, Chris, just briefly. Um, so with this process, as we do with any um competitive service or um anything over a $15,000 dollar amount, it really depends. Um, we follow a pretty formal bid process, so this was advertised in the paper. It was sent and so, uh, we solicited contractors specifically. Um, and we do that basically, like I said, with any competitive service that we hire for um, or anything over $15,000 mark. So that's what we've done in all of our schools and that's what we did here in Franklin, um, as far as the snow plow bid.
So Laura, you did that, um, bids came in last Wednesday, was it? And then uh, we had, you had to go through them all and Joyce and Steve had to go through them all because it's, even though you try, it's not always apples to apples. You had to do reference checks, et cetera. Um, and then we shared um that information with the facility task force as well, so that they could take a look and um have some of their questions answered. Um, and we're, I, I guess Joyce, uh, did you want to talk about? You want to, should, Laura, should we share the the document? Should we just talk through what the recommendations are with the? Because I know there's definitely a recommendation.
Why don't we let Joyce um speak to the recommendation? I can share the document on cost if, if that, if people would like at the same time, or we can just listen. It's up to you.
Laura, I think it'd be, I think it'd be nice to put the document up just so it's on the recording.
I will do that now. Yep. And so the document I'm sharing just shows the, the cost. Is that the one you were speaking to, Devin?
Yeah.
Okay. One second. It was open and then I closed it.
Well, while Laura's getting that up, so basically, basically today, I sent to the um Facilities Task Force Group, to Julie and to Laura. Um, just trying to make sure we had a comparison. Um, we put for each bidder, the references that we'd spoken with, what the equipment was. Um, and basically, um, you know, if there was multiple people in the company, um, if there was backup, um, commercial experience. Um, also clarifying about the pure salt or not pure salt. And then we did a summary of um what we were recommending. I guess I'd be a real, little reluctant to go into too much detail in open session, um, regarding too much. Um, so basically we felt that um our preference would be uh R and M lawn care. Um, basically from the bids received, we felt due to the equipment that was available, the personnel available, the backup in place and being very highly recommended by a school in our district. And um, I think if people maybe want to know anything in more detail, maybe we would do that in executive session, Julie. I don't know. Um, but that was our recommendation to the task force. Um,
The task force hasn't discussed it. I mean, we got the information today, uh, yesterday. Uh, so I don't know if the task force has a recommendation or, or not. Uh, I do have some questions and I don't know if it'd be better in executive session. That's a, you'll have to determine that comfort level. Uh, if you want to go forward, I will, but if you want to wait to executive session, that's fine too.
I.
The, oh, the only reason we would really go into executive session, if it was confidential information, if it would put somebody at one party at risk or another, although we are looking at issuing contracts, so that is something that can be discussed in executive session.
My, my question has to do, is a general question about a bid process and I, and I want to say that the information that we got, I thought was very thorough and at least the questions I had, I got good answers. Uh, but I, when I think at the end of the day, when I looked at it, I saw that uh, the administration was going to make a recommendation and I guess maybe even indicated who it was. And at that point, I had a concern about the process. Uh, because it appeared to me that we had two outliers. We had one that probably we shouldn't consider because they weren't even close. Uh, we had one that we probably shouldn't consider. Uh, and even though I'm for the small guy, the independent business person uh, location, Franklin is a far piece away from uh where some of the bidders reside.
Yes.
Reside, reside. So in my mind, it came down to, we really have two bidders that seem to meet the criteria. Uh, and I don't know if Joyce or Laura or Julie agree with me or the facilities committee, but as I looked through, I took the low bid, which was significantly low, and the high bid, which was significantly high, and said, I'm not interested in exploring them. What takes us to two? Uh, and then I guess maybe this is executive session. I, I would be interested in how we came up with uh the recommendation uh that I think we're getting. Uh, because as you know, the bid process is a very sensitive process. Uh, because as you know, the bid process is a very sensitive process. And word on the street gets out fast. And I would be willing to share, if you wanted to, an experience I had and I just think that uh. We have to look carefully if we're going to give a a bid. If everybody meets the criteria, which it appeared everybody did meet the criteria other than their price and not having backup. So. I can leave it there. We can move forward and see what happens, or you can wait till executive session.
I would say, I think kind of Joyce spoke to the fact that uh, like you, one of those bids was uh, out of the ballpark in terms of being too high. Uh, the lowest bid, uh, a lot of questions were really asked to reassure administration as to whether they could. Uh, have the equipment, the personnel, the backup plan, et cetera, to uh, do the level of work required. Uh, and um, there are some reservations about that. So that's not the recommendation we're bringing forward. The other two companies, um, Laura, I don't know if we can speak to that. They're very closely aligned companies. Um, and so really the 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 fact that um, is it R and M? Uh, is so closely, uh, it has the experience with Highgate and uh, that that was such a high. Recommendation for um, essentially no difference in cost.
Peter.
So I would just like to throw out there that uh. Getting back. Anyways, so you can see what we paid last year uh, with the town of Franklin doing it for forty eight hundred dollars. Significantly lower than uh, the bids that we're looking at. Uh, it's it's half that. Or less. So I'm just, the the town is certainly still willing to do it for the 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 same uh, thing that uh, was agreed to last year. Um, significant savings. Uh. The school is already uh, looking at getting a tractor, loader and snow blower. Um, you know, we're looking at another twenty, twenty five thousand dollar cost for that that wasn't budgeted. Uh, I just think that. You know, whatever we can do to save money, this is a lot of extra expenses when. We're in a year where we're already having a lot of extra expenses. Um, I I'd just like to throw out there that the the town is still uh, willing to provide this service to the school.
Peter, just so you know, I don't know on the summary, I did say that that was our preference from the bids received. Because I don't want anybody to think we weren't pleased with the work from the town. Um, we were. Um, we love Jake and Jeremy and thought they did a good job. And so, and I had asked Laura about whether or not that was still a possibility. Um, because, you know, we had been pleased and but I don't know if the town could give us like a flat rate. Last year we didn't have a lot of snow. So that was, and it was significantly lower than the bids, at least most of the bids that we received. Um, but I don't know if that's a possibility. But I do want you to know that I would never want anybody to think that we weren't pleased with the work that Jake and Jeremy did. And that's why on my summary, I said from the bids received. Um, because I know you would say the town.
Ooh, feedback. Chris, it looked like you wanted, Chris, it looked like you wanted.
Yeah, I I kinda, I'm a little uncomfortable with this conversation and where it's going. And the reason why I say that is because we invited Franklin. And I guess my first question, Peter, are you representing the select board right now? And then the reason why I ask that is we invited Franklin to bid on this and they, I believe it was you said that Franklin doesn't bid on plowing. So I I guess I'm, I'm a little. I I I'm a little lost at why all of a sudden Franklin's willing to do it when we invited him to bid and. I I guess I'm I'm lost in the process.
Uh, Franklin's always done it. Um. The the school wanted to go out for bid, that's fine. It's fine if if you don't want Franklin to continue to do it. Just wanted the board to realize that um, it's still an option. The town is still willing to do it like we've always done it. If the board decides not to go that way. Certainly no hard feelings with the town. We're just here trying to save uh, the same taxpayers uh, money. Trying to, you know, still provide the same service. Um, but trying to do it um, in a way that can help the taxpayers.
I'm all for Franklin plowing. I mean, especially if they're the, you know, uh, much more cost efficient and I I realize Franklin did all the plowing. But I guess that where I'm lost is why didn't they bid?
It just didn't seem, uh, you know, we don't bid on our own roads. You know, it's it's, we own the school, we all, you know, pay into it together. It's, to me, it's no different than. Uh, we're doing the sidewalks, that, you know, the school's doing the sidewalks. We, you know, we're not bidding that. You know, we're not, I I just, I look at it, we're all one, one group here. We're all the same people. Um, and like I said, i- if the board, you know, wants to go a different direction, that that's fine. That's, you know, less stress on our equipment and stuff. I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that the town is still willing to provide that service.
Thank you.
Since I, since I raised some questions before that, if other board members want to speak to this, I I prefer they speak before I say anymore. I don't think it should be my turn again.
Terry.
Would it even be? Would it even be legitimate after we put out to bid if we were to go with somebody else at this point? If we went with Franklin or is that not legal anymore?
You can always reject all bids.
I always, I always include language that the board reserves the right to reject any and all bids. Would it be poor form, in my professional opinion, when you have viable bids that were received? You know, good quality bids at a reasonable price, which I think we did receive from from qualified contractors to refuse them all. Um. In my professional opinion, would really not be um, best practice. But we always do include that language. So legally, yes, the board could do that.
I just want to clarify one thing though, and Peter said that the school wanted to go out to bid. I just want to be clear that the Franklin School didn't ask to go out to bid. That that was the process that we needed to follow um, this year for the snow plowing contract. Um, it was not that we asked to go out to bid.
Right. I think, you know, the board will remember last year, um, before the snow plowing season started. Town of Highgate said, you know, we're not gonna just plow anymore. We wanted to give you notice, which they did. So we went out to bid. Uh, and um, for Highgate's plowing for the winter. Um, and uh, the select board reached out to us and said, you know, we just think that uh, to be fair. Um, we're willing to do it, but it would be nice if uh, the school board uh, paid the town of Franklin for that service. And we came up with an agreement, um, and the board reviewed it and felt it was fair, which it certainly was. Um, but at that time, we were pretty clear that. If we were going to be moving forward with paying the municipality, that it would be part of a bu- a a bid process. So it wasn't that anyone was unhappy with the town's work, certainly not, not trying to um. Create any tension between the town and the school district. That's the last thing that we want to do. Um, but that we were, we said publicly that we would be going out to bid for this. So we did. And um, I'm sorry, I did expect that the town would be a part of that um, bid proposal and I'm I'm sorry that they were not. So it's the board's pleasure about um, moving forward and what they want to do for next steps.
So at this time, we have a recommendation from um, Joyce and Steve that they recommend, uh, I believe it was R and M. Uh, lawn maintenance. I remember the, if I got the company name right.
Yeah.
Uh, would anybody like to pass that on as a motion?
Before we do.
I didn't hear you, Dawn. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Uh, yes.
Well, if nobody's gonna make. Issue the contract.
So Dawn's recommendation is that we issue the contract to Poor Boys. Uh, I didn't get anybody for R and M. Anybody want to move that motion forward? Uh, Megan's the first, Devon's the second. Any discussion? Devon?
Well, I guess I just wanted to hear from Dawn, uh, why why he uh, was making that recommendation.
Well, I I think Laura, in responding to Peter, uh, said something that I very much agree with. I don't want to be an old jerk, but I've probably done bids for fifty years. And uh, if you have bidders that meet the criteria. Then you really need to be careful if you pick one over the other because. They've either worked for your buddy or somebody in the school knows them or they've worked in the district. Uh, so I think I agree with everybody. There was no reason to include, to consider the high bid and the low bid. So it came down to two bids. And even though the money is very close. Uh, I didn't hear anybody say that there were bad references on Poor Boy. Uh, what I did hear that the other company had done well for Highgate last year and that that we recommended there. That may be very upfront and honest, but sometimes the public that appears that. Because your brother-in-law or some good friend works somewhere, you got the bid. So I think you have to, you really should stay with a dollar amount. That's the only reason I'm recommending them is they were the low bidder. We eliminated those we didn't think were qualified or too expensive. And when you get down to those two, if the rationale is because they work for us in another school and that someone recommends them. I honestly think that's a little weak uh, in a bidding process. And my concern is. Probably won't create a problem, but if you start bidding that way. And and we had this at MVU because somebody MVU knew somebody that sold something and called and they got the bid. So I think we have to be careful and that's why I made the recommendation we go with Poor Boy, because nobody said anything bad about them. I think they're pretty equal except for uh.
Dawn. Dawn, I guess it, yeah, sorry, I guess just to, maybe I. I guess what we were talking about was that they have a, R and M has a contract with a school. And that's what we were looking at was someone that had. School plowing experience and was also highly recommended because of that experience. So we were really looking at it as just who has a school contract and has done schools before. And knows when schools have to be done, the time of day they have to be done, the type of clearing, has the capacity to do that. And it wasn't like who knew who. It was just, it was like who had the school experience and it had a school contract. And honestly, between the two, the money was so close. Um. You know, I I think. I hear what you're saying, but it wasn't because of somebody knew somebody. It was because they actually had experience in a school that's slightly larger than ours. And has done a really good job. So that that was kind of our thinking, but I guess you can think about it different ways for sure.
You know, if if school, if plowing snow in a school was different, was concerned, we should have had it in our bid criteria. Because most of these people do commercial, they do big jobs, parking lots. But anyway, I just wanted to make my point. Uh, if I lose, that's fine, but I don't like accepting bids, whether it's a dollar or two hundred or two thousand. If the process uh, seemed to make them equal.
Yep. No, I I hear what you're saying and I think, I hear what you're saying and the two companies work very closely together. They actually help each other out. So in the Highgate contract, Poor Boys helps R and M and I think it works both ways. So. They're very closely connected, I guess.
Terry.
My question was, I remember in the past, sometimes when we've had this, sorry, Chris, I'm echoing. Okay. I remember in the past when we've had this, sometimes it's not always apples to apples because of the amount of sand they use or because of other stuff. Is this all already figured out that is apples to apples?
Yes.
And and we have specifically asked for a flat, a flat rate, so not a per plow cost, which sometimes that can be the issue. Yep.
Are we ready to vote? It would appear to be. So all those in favor of awarding the contract to Poor Boys Plowing, uh, raise your hand. Uh, all those against? Raise your hand. Uh, motion failed. Uh, looked like it was one to seven. I'm missing somebody here.
Chris, did we ever have a second for that?
Second for that motion?
Yes. The uh, I believe Devon was the second, Megan was the first or the other way around. I'm not sure.
I thought they did R and M.
No, the fir-, we never got a motion for R and M. I only had a motion for Poor Boys.
Was that, was that? Was that the?
Figure out the vote here, because I think I'm.
I had.
Oh, no, I got it. Okay. Yeah, it was, it went down one to seven. So at this time, I guess, uh, what's the board's pleasure? Or do we want to revisit R and M or are we just gonna not accept any bids at this time?
I'd make a motion to accept R and M.
So Devon's the first on accepting R and M's uh, bid. Do I have a second? I don't. So that motion fails. But, but Dawn?
Okay, somebody else want to just, I'm sure, I don't want to cut them off.
No, you're the only one.
I make a motion. All bid, and we have more and Joyce. And see if we can.
Uh, so the motion is that we reject all bids that were submitted and. I I'm sorry, Dawn, you broke up at the end. I didn't hear the last.
No, Laura, and I don't know if Julie wants to be, Laura, uh, and Joyce, meet with the Franklin Select Board before the next board meeting, before it snows. And see if we can negotiate a contract for the ensuing year.
Do we have a second? Uh, Jen's the second. Any discussion? Hearing the, uh, Devon?
Yeah, I guess. I would echo what um, Laura had said earlier. You know, we had, you know, we had put together the the big process. And I wish that Franklin Town had. Sent in a bid, uh, but. You know, just because they didn't take the opportunity. I think we still got valid bids from other, other folks and I'd like to award it to those who did follow the process. We asked for them to follow.
Terry.
I hope I, I hope I echo. I am. The the question I had is what was the difference in the bid price between the two that we're considering?
Two hundred dollars. One was ten thousand, one was ten thousand two hundred.
So no difference really. Okay, that helps. Thank you.
We still didn't have a second to award it to R and M.
Right. This time, the motion on the floor is to uh, do away with all the, or um, reject all the bids. And have Laura and Julie and Joyce work with the select board on a flat rate for plowing. Is everybody ready to vote on that motion?
Did, do we have a second on that?
Yes.
I I would like to ask. I guess I don't really have a question so much as a comment. I'm just kinda, there's another option out there, but we're voting on this one right now. Okay, thank you.
So all those in favor of Dawn's motion of rejecting all the bids and having. and having the administration work with Franklin Select Board, raise your hand. Uh, I believe I have three, four. All those opposed? Four, five opposed, motion fails. So at this point, we have no contract and we have no plans. So what would be somebody's motion to move forward? Or plan to move forward?
Is it germane to try my motion again?
Motion again?
I'm all for it. I, I don't know. Can we do that in two motions in one meeting or the same motion? I'm not sure on that one. I've never had to do this.
What's the proposed motion?
Uh, propose again to accept a bid from R and Lawn Care.
So Don, oh boy, we are echoing up today. The motion Devon put forth, a motion before yours, uh, for, to accept R and M, there was no second for that. So I'm not entirely sure. It's not as if the motion had a second and then failed. So Peter's nodding. I think they can do it again. Uh, it would be different if we voted on Poor Boys again or, you know, when there was a failed motion. So I think if you, if you make your motion.
That, that motion is kinda still hanging out there. It's, there's nothing happened to it yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So at this time, we have, just a second, Terry. Uh, we have a motion from Devon to accept R and M plowing, or Lawn Care, uh, for the plowing bid for Franklin. Do I have a second? Terry's the second. Okay, discussion.
If, if we do this, we could always, we could always back, back, appreciate the town. Franklin, that the next year, we would really love to have some area of so many of bidding process, process for the next time, the next time. This year, I would imagine, I would imagine is about working this out, working this out.
There, there's, there's not gonna be any hard feelings. It's, 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 it's our job easier. We, it was just, just an offer to help. It's, it's, it's fine.
It's fine. I'm not worried about hard feelings. I think for feelings, it makes perfect sense. If we can save money and if they're willing to do it, I just think that we've gone down a certain road and that procedures and policies and ethics and all that, that for this year, I think we need to continue down the road we started. And then the next year, we've learned something. And hopefully Franklin will still be willing.
I would add that next year and I would add that only assigning a one-year contract for Franklin this year was in the hopes to get our cycle on the same with the other school districts. Not that we would have to award that way, but it definitely opens up the potential to do that.
Okay. Yes. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of awarding the contract to RM, RM Lawn Care, raise your hand. Uh, opposed? Motion carries six to two. Okay, uh, on to V S B A Voting Delegate Election for the Annual Meeting.
Yes. Don, I appreciate you having, uh, reminded me to put this on because this is one of those things where I don't realize, um, you're having an annual meeting and I didn't, uh, so I didn't get any notification outside of you that, um, V S B A was having the annual meeting and that you needed to elect a voting delegate. So maybe, Don, you can, uh, explain? You're muted.
Annual meeting, the annual meeting is coming up on the twenty-seventh. Uh, and every school district gets a vote. It's a virtual meeting. Every school board member in Vermont can from, can participate in the discussion. Uh, but when it comes to voting, you have only one vote. And so they ask each board to show in their minutes who their elected person is, who's gonna represent their board in voting on nine different resolutions and the budget. And that will be five o'clock next Tuesday night, virtual. And I did tell Julie that I, that I do plan to attend. Uh, but if someone else would like to represent the board, that's fine. We just have to have it in the minutes.
Terry?
I was gonna make a motion that we have Don be our representative if he is willing.
So we have a motion, uh, to have Don represent us at the V S B A. Uh, second, Peter? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of having Don represent us, raise your hand. Uh, opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, uh, seven, zero, one. Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
What was that, Don?
I'll try to represent you while, no, spend a lot of money.
Thank you. Uh, okay. Next up in new business is the side letter regarding the school calendar.
Yes, let me see if I can open that. It is in your folder. And, uh, thank you to Parette again. She is the, uh, queen of side letters. Now that's not the right. So as you certainly understand, we've had a very, uh, different beginning of school. Our calendar is set in, oh gosh, April, March, April, shared with the association. Uh, and that is, um, outlined in the master agreement that we share the calendar with the association and it is set, uh, by June of, uh, one school year for the next upcoming school year. Well, we certainly were very transparent with the, oh, yes? Terry?
I think you're on twice. I see you on twice and I think that's where maybe some of the noise is coming from. Is that possible? Oh, it's not echoing anymore. Okay.
You know what? I may be, I may, um,
She's on twice cause she's presenting. Once she's done presenting and she'll go back to being on just once.
So you can see it in your Google folder. When I was presenting, were you seeing yourselves or were you seeing the document?
I was seeing the document, but if you look at the list of people, you are listed twice when you present.
Yes. Um, so, so now I wanna look at the document rather than at you all. Thank you, Terry. So, um, section eight point one of the master agreement really talks about the, um, calendar being set no later than June first. So because of the pandemic, because the school year was, um, delayed, uh, at the start by the governor and executive action, uh, we had the association working with us, obviously on the steering committee all the way through the whole process of the reopening. And, um, they certainly understood that we would be, uh, amending the calendar. Um, we did not have a decision from the Vermont Legislature until September twenty-fifth that, uh, the hundred and seventy-five required student days would be waived and that we could just have a calendar with a hundred and seventy student days. At that time, MVU had to change its calendar, um, because they are moving to a semester schedule and a four-by-four rather than a year-long schedule. So they changed their parent teacher conference day to a day that was already a day off in the calendar last Friday. Um, and with the return of our younger students to full-time instruction, um, we had had a, an in-service day for elementary students that was going to be on the sixth, right smack dab in the middle of bringing kids back, which did not seem to be a sensible time to have a day off um, for children and a, a parent teacher conference day for teachers who are probably still in the middle of moving those desks. So we moved, uh, with, uh, the administrative team, discussed at length, uh, and negotiated, uh, and ended up on, uh, moving the in-service, uh, not in-service, pardon me, the parent teacher conference day for elementary and that becomes a day off for the high school from the sixth of November to the thirteenth. So the association, because it is in the contract, there were some folks that felt that they wanted a side letter, um, just solidifying the fact that there was a change to the calendar. Um, and I, again, thanks to Parette for not only outlining the things in the calendar that we know have changed at this point, but also acknowledging the fact that should there be a school closure in the future, should there be a change that needs to be made up? Uh, we will, the calendar is subject to change. It's typically not. Um, we may need to make up days. We may need to, uh, you know, have a remote day, on-town meeting day because we have a day to make up. I mean, there are things that may have to happen. Uh, should we have those things come up, we will work with the association on that, um, throughout. So, uh, we are hoping that you will approve this side letter because I think it will just, um, codify our agreement.
So at this time, I'd entertain a motion to allow the board chair or vice chair to sign the side letter. Uh, Megan's the first, Terry's the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of, uh, of allowing the board chair and vice, or vice chair to sign the side letter, uh, raise your hand. Motion carries eight, zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we're done with new business. Uh, on to old business. First up, uh, we have a couple of policies. The first one was the Title IX policy.
And that's a mandated policy. You've had a chance for review. Uh, it's a little light reading. Um, we actually have the administrative team, uh, will be attending, uh, a training at the end of November on the administration of this policy. Um, Pietro and Heather Lynn will be putting that on through Visbit. Um, so we were, we would appreciate your adopting this policy tonight. It's, uh, written by lawyers.
Uh, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt Title IX policy. Uh, Don's the first.
Go on.
Uh, Megan's the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting Title IX policy, raise your hand. Motion carries eight, zero. The next policy is the electronic communication policy.
Very similar, uh, the same, uh, it's a mandated policy. It was created, uh, and put on the, uh, sent to us by Visbit as a newly mandated policy. Um, and we did make, uh, one tweak that I shared with you last week, uh, to clarify, um, communications using something like Google Classroom. Um, but, uh, we would, uh, look pleased for a motion to adopt that policy.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the electronic, or electric, electronic communication policy. Terry's the first.
Looked like Joanne, looked like Joanne.
Uh, Joanne's the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries eight, zero.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, last thing in old business is food service update.
Okay, I just wanted to, um, make the board aware that the, um, summer food service program, um, waivers that we've been operating under, that we thought would end in December are now, have now been formally extended to the end of the school year. Um, so we will continue to be able to provide free meals for all, all our, all of our community population, basically under the age of eighteen. Um, if the need is there, without, um, any regard for free reduced price status, um, we will be area eligible. So I just wanna make sure we're putting that out there. Please continue to spread the word and let people know that if there's a need, um, we will be continuing to provide those meals. That model will be looking a little different with bringing all the elementary kids back. We're still working through that. Um, but good news for us also because reimbursement rate is high. So that makes our life easier and the administrative burden, burden is low. So good all around.
And always positive when we get to feed students with, um, less red tape. Just feed, feed all the gifts. That's what we like.
Very good. Nice to hear some good news for once. Okay, so on to other business. Uh, first up would be our facility task force update. Don or Peter, you wanna do that or you want me to do it?
Go for it. Go for it.
Okay. We met on the fourteenth. We had a lot of discussion around actually tractors and plowing and stuff. We also, um, kinda slipped my mind what we talked about. Feels like a lot more than a week ago.
Tractors and plowings.
Huh?
Tractors and plowings.
That was pretty much it, wasn't it? Okay.
Performance contracting.
Right, but we've already kinda moved forward with that. We've talked, we're, you know, there's a lot to learn with performance contracting and what we're gonna use it for. There was, I remember now, there was a lot of discussion on the priority list of the bond in Highgate. Um, there is one major concern that roof in the white building leaks now. Um, Scott is working through some options and some bids for, uh, replacing the roof, but doing it possibly in stages. There's one section that leaks, cause the way the roof is, it's in basically four sections. So he wants to replace the section that's leaking, obviously. And, uh, uh, and he, I think he has a couple of bids that would probably work and they could do it before winter. Uh, that was one of the big issues there. Then we, we started the discussion on, uh, reprioritizing the list of, that we had created for the Highgate bond now that we can kinda weigh it against some of the options with the performance contracting, cause there is some things within the performance contracting that's appealing, um, based on the efficiencies that maybe we can pull out of the bond and redirect or reallocate funds in different ways. Um, once again, this is gonna be a lengthy discussion, uh, this winter. We have to figure a lot out, but we started that process. I know there was some discussion around, uh, MVU's, uh, I believe they call it capital reserve. Am I calling that the correct fund, Laura?
Capital, or capital renewal, or capital renewal.
Yep. So some discussion, there's some money left in there. So there's some discussion about how to use that effectively for MVU. Um, that pretty much sums it up for me. Peter?
I just wanted to expand on your, uh, the white building in Highgate. We, we did, important probably for the board to know that, um, that building is in rough shape and, and we're obviously putting, gonna put money into it to, to keep it where we need to have it, to be safe and everything. But there, you know, we did have discussions about, you know, what's, what are we gonna do with that building? Are we gonna keep putting money hand over fist into it or is it, are we gonna replace it? Or just, just those kinds of discussions so people aren't surprised if they, you know, hear that kinda thing in the future.
And, uh, Laura and, uh, Yeshua and I are gonna meet Friday morning to, uh, talk about space and, and future use, building use, so that will help inform some of those discussions.
I think, I think along that line that Chris mentioned, we did ask or did indicate, we'd like to get information from someone, maybe architect or whatever, on what it might cost to add to the brick building to handle the expected, the current and expected enrollment. And, uh, I don't know if that's going anywhere, but that was mentioned by one of us that, uh, you know, is there a way to put, house all those students in the brick building with maybe some type of addition or remodeling in the? maybe some type of addition or remodeling in the building? So that'd be something. And Chris, the other thing is, are we supposed to vote here for buying a tractor, snowblower, whatever? Facilities committee supported it, but we couldn't, we don't have the authority to buy it, do we?
They don't need our authority to buy it. What they're going to do is bring forward a lease agreement at some point, and the board, the entire board will have to vote on that.
Okay.
But the superintendent has the authority to spend the budget that's, you know, within the budget that we have. It's just, we brought it to the facility committee because it was a tractor and because it was a change from the budget. And so we wanted to have the blessing of, of that task force. So we'll bring you a lease agreement.
I believe that's it from the task, facilities task force. Yep, so we can move on to the board goals update.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and start. There were, for the sake of time, there's really three things that we were going to focus on tonight, other than other people might have other input or you might have questions. Now, three things, we're just giving an update from what we talked about last month, or last meeting, when we talked about the mission of the board. And we got a couple of feedback, we got a couple of feedback items. First of all, in the meeting, Don, you had suggested that maybe we want to add team management or the whole administrative team of Julie's as opposed to just the superintendent. And we thought about that and kind of, like, it says work closely as opposed to, you know, work with. And that's why we thought, okay, we'll just leave superintendent there instead of adding. If you feel really strongly about it, we could consider saying work directly instead of work closely. No, you're okay? Okay, so if we leave it that. And then the other thing, we had some input that Peter said, you know, we're not always, we can't always be brief at these meetings. Sometimes it takes a little more conversation. So we changed that word brief to concise. Other than that, I know, other than that, it's, you know, so we're hoping, and Julie's got it now, and I, this is when we said we don't need to go to approval or votes or anything. But just so you all can see it, we'll hopefully put it in the shared document. Julie, I think, was going to do that.
It's in there, and I'm happy to show it if you would like. The mission statement version that you have?
Should we just kind of quickly?
Just look at it.
Yeah, let's look at it. I just want to open it up so I'm doing it correctly and not double sharing it or whatever the heck I was doing before.
I love Megan, version seven. And Megan, if you want to add anything, because this is your baby, really.
Are you seeing that covered enough?
Can you make it bigger, Julie, by any chance? Yeah, that's better. So hopefully everyone can see it. Should we just let everybody read it by themselves? It wasn't just the concise, Peter, also. It was also contributed appropriately to board work, as opposed to when we were saying work in between meetings, that we thought this gave it more clarity. And if I could add something here, I know that mission statements are supposed to just be one sentence and supposed to be easy to remember, and that we have two sentences up there. But if I were to suggest, that first sentence deals mostly with our, as a board, obviously our mission is to support the mission of the organization we're the board of, which I think that first sentence really does. And then I think the second sentence talks more about what we do, you know, why it's specific to the board. So if we have to remember either of them, it's kind of like we support the MVSD mission and we represent the community, work closely with the superintendent, provide fiscal, you know, oversight, yada, yada. Any comments, Megan? Do you want to add anything?
No, I mean, I think you've covered it and we've been over sort of what our plan was with this. So yeah, folks just want to read over it and let us know if there are any major changes you'd like to see.
Yeah. Yeah, because this is one of those things that we're going to be using it as our guide for decisions, et cetera. So, and that's why we added those guiding principles, because rather than just having a mission statement no one remembers, but to talk about, okay, how, how can we use this to guide our decisions, the way we work together? Great. So the other two things I want to talk to you about tonight are, one of the goals, and that's going to be Joanne talking to you. And then I also want to talk to you a little bit about the performance review process that we're working on and where we're at in that. So probably since we just showed you the mission, probably next would make sense to talk about the development of the goals that Joanne was talking about. Does that make sense? And then refer back to me, Joanne, after you finish, to talk about the review process.
Thank you, Terry. I'm not usually one of the talkers here in the group, but I just, since I have the floor and my, you know, I can speak, a task for the facility task force, I was just thinking how you're talking about the white building in Highgate. And for me, I, I know the white building in Highgate, but I've never been inside the white building, and I know your concern about the roof. Would it be worth putting pictures, just because this is recorded and the public gets to see it? It's just a thought, if there was damage in places, you know, water damage or cracks in the cement, like, I'm not sure, but that's just, that's my thought, if it would be worth taking pictures and, and putting them in our meeting. Okay, moving on, moving on to, Devin and I met a few weeks ago. One of my, one of my goals was to work on, it was number three. I know we haven't talked about the goals in a while, but it was to increase community engagement. And then part of number three was broken down to the letter B, which I chose, to develop a plan for student involvement at the board meetings. So as we are now, just ideas that we had had, if we could kind of, I was thinking of keeping the same schedule, and I'm going to use Julie's name, that Julie had created or the board had created, where on the first week, we used to meet at Mrs. Goy. I don't think I was on the board when that ever happened, because we stopped. And then the third week, it was rotating around to the different elementary schools. We would visit, or the board would visit a different elementary school every week. So we were kind of hoping, or I was hoping that we could keep the same schedule, where in the first week, we invite a high school, middle school student to, if they're comfortable, to, you know, sit in, maybe have them come at the beginning of the meeting, because we use today's meeting, like, this is, this is a good meeting, but maybe not for a student to be like, are you serious? You know, we're voting on plowing. So I would understand that a student wouldn't want to stay through for all of that, but if we could invite them for the first 10 minutes of our meeting and just ask them, how are things going? What are you involved with? You know, but what subjects are you taking? Like, just get to know our students in our schools. So if they really weren't comfortable with that and they were more comfortable, maybe doing a video of MVU, because this is what kids do now, they take videos and they talk about, like, take a video of, you know, 30 seconds in a classroom or just in the cafeteria, what is it like now? Show me the arrows that are at MVU. Like, I, I can't go to MVU. So, you know, make it fun for them. So those are just thoughts to getting them involved and doing a presentation, you know, to the board. And then with the elementary school, of course, we have elementary principals on with us. So, I mean, I definitely open to ideas, but they might be more timid about coming on to, you know, a Tuesday night board meeting, and maybe they would feel more comfortable where if we, you know, did a list of questions, we might have two, three questions that we might be curious about for an elementary student. And we, you know, they said, you know, if the principal or a teacher sat down to, with one of the students and was like, hey, the school board is really interested in asking you some questions. These are the questions that they've put together for you. Can we, you know, videotape you and then share it with the board, share it with the, you know, community that's watching? So that's where we're at. I mean, obviously, we, I want to hear from everybody. I want to hear from our athletes. I want to hear from our national honor societies. I want to hear from our ag department students. I don't want to leave anybody out, so it's, it's hard. But this, at least it doesn't start. We can at least start somewhere, because I just feel like we don't have any involvement. So that is my brainstorming.
We definitely had, am I muted? Nope. We definitely had some of that happening last year, and we felt like we got started and then it sort of stopped, right? So, and what would be interesting, Joanne, and that's not a decision for today, but I'd be curious to see if this board wants to have an MVU student rep on the board. Maybe they wouldn't come twice a month, but they'd come once a month, and they need to apply for that, right? It looks good on your, your applications. And so obviously you would have somebody who wants to, and then their job is to come and give a report and to talk about what are the activities that are happening. And administration typically works with them to make sure they're covering the kinds of things that, that they know the board is, is looking to hear about. So those kinds of things, and I love, like, I would love to see a video of the mural outside Swan. I would love to see that, you know, because I'm feeling the same loss that I know the board is, because I'm not bopping around in classrooms and doing those kinds of things and, you know, it's just not the same, because you really try and keep the bubbles intact. Yeshua said, don't come here. It's too normal. We don't, we try and have that as our lens. If it feels a little too like business as usual, then, you know, we're not being careful enough. So I think those are some interesting ideas, and I will put that on our agenda for tomorrow's administrative team to really do some brainstorming. We have that table of topics. And then part of, part of what we do as an administrative team, every, we meet every week, but, you know, now that we're getting back into this very long opening of school, we can start looking at upcoming board meetings and, and what makes sense to present to the board and involving more students is good feedback for us.
Chris?
That's great.
Don?
I, I love Joanne's idea, because I was on the board of MVU when we had student representative. One suggestion I would make, and I would defer to Mr. Hartman, but if we're going to do this, we might want a couple of students. I think it's hard if you're the only student. I think, I don't know if we had an alter to it, I know we saw different ones, but if we had two students, whether they came at the same time or they shared or whatever, but you know, even though we think we're a good friendly group, it's kind of a big step for a student to come out, start talking about school and ask questions and, you know, kind of look at the administrator, should I say that? Should I not say that? So, and I, I would ask that maybe we consider having two students be student delegates to the meeting.
Terry?
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's a great idea, and I think what you said, Don, is a great idea. One thing I do think that, there's two things I think we need to be careful about. Well, first of all, I think it was great. I just really want to say that. The two things I would like us to consider, number one, are not to put any more work on any teachers or administration at this point, just, you know, especially maybe little. So it would be great if you talk about that at your admin team, Julie, so that we can find out about that. And number two, that we have a real purpose in having the kids come, like, what, you know, like, so we give them real guidance as to what we're looking for, so that it's not just because they're so darn cute, we want to see them, but how does it move us towards making things better for students? That's what I'd really like to see. How does it help us as a board make things better for students? Because we say that's our most important thing, right? So thank you, Joanne. It's great. So the next thing I had said, I know, we don't have a lot of time, but just to kind of review, the next thing we want to talk, wait a second, I'm chatting away. Did we give people time to chime in on that? Don said something. Did anyone else want to say anything about what Devin and Joanne have been doing?
Devin?
Well, I'll first start by saying Joanne has done the work on, on this one, so don't give me any credit on the student involvement piece. But I think also, Terry, you and Joanne are on the same, the same page in terms of having a purpose. You know, what I heard was asking those students to come in, but giving them some of those prompts ahead of time, especially with the recording for maybe some of the younger kids. So we can, we can align kind of what our topics of the day are with, with what we ask for the feedback from the students about.
That's great. That's good. It's a lot of organizing. Okay, anyone else? Be fun to hear what the admin teams comes up with, Joanne, as we keep going through this, so, great. And I think you should talk more. So, the, the last part is the performance review. And if you all remember, a while ago, we approved the superintendent for job description. So, and that's one part. The second part is when we were at our retreat and also some other conversations we've had over the years, we really wished that we had, we really felt the importance and wished that we had a strong performance review system for the superintendent. And so what we did here, we're thinking about the way to approach this, is to use the job description that we agreed on to also use it as a vehicle for the performance evaluation, for the performance evaluation form. So, because it's, there's domains that, if you can remember, leadership, management, you know, those kinds of things. And so it makes sense to have those be our categories, our domains. And it also makes sense, we talked about it at the meeting, that some of the considerations we would have is that the discussion is more important than anything else throughout the year, that we wanted to have discussions about feedback, that we're lucky right now because we've got an incredibly wonderful superintendent. But not every supervisory district union is always going to be that fortunate. So it's important that we have this in place for when we have extraordinary ones, but also when people need a little help growing and developing. So I'm not quite sure how to show you tonight. I know we're short time left. So what I think would be best is if Julie had made the, made it available on the drive. And so I just want to tell you what's there and not go through it, not have you read it tonight, but Julie, do you mind showing them what we've got?
We'll be happy to do that.
Thank you, Julie. We're not going to read all the details, we're just going to give you an overview so that you can look at it, and then we can talk about it at a different time. But I really would like us to get moving on this, because we're already at the end of October. And how long has it been since we gave you a performance review, Julie? And I know I'm part of that problem, too, so I'd like to see us be able to do it.
Terry, what did I do with it? Hold on, I'll have to look. I'll have to find it in the email.
That's okay. I'll describe what it is then. That the first page just talks about some of the ideas behind it, you know, why we want to do this, and that we want it to be evidence-based, and that we think it's about, it's important in terms of be two-way conversations, that it be inclusive, et cetera. And then it talks about what the commitments might be from board members, and then commitments from superintendent. And at the very bottom, it talks about things that we're still missing, like what months would we want to do this? We want to have quarterly check-ins. We want to get feedback from admin as well, you know, so it's more like a, more input from other people as opposed to just the board. You know, so those are kind of considerations we still have to do. But then the form would be pretty clear-cut based on, do you have it by any chance, Julie? Or I could look into it.
I'm looking for it. I've got it. I've got it.
Great. So as you can see here, this is the first page with those important considerations, board member commitment, superintendent commitments, and then process needing further details or discussion. But if you keep going, this is what it could look like. So part one could be the assessment of job performance standards, and this is what, it's based right on the job description, which talks about leadership, and it has tho, those squares and bullets beneath it. Job two, diversity, equity, inclusion, again, with the same stuff. And as you can see before, there would be evidence of practice, and this is where we And this is where we would write down specific examples of, of how, you know, highly effective, what made it highly effective? What did they do? What did they accomplish? Okay. And then so on and so forth. I mean, three is management. All those bullets are what are on the job description.
Boy, there's a lot of management.
Yeah? What?
It said, there's a lot of management.
Oh, that's true. And then policy, budget. If we keep going, I just wanted to see the second part and the third part here, Julie. So you can see, here's part six. And then part two, or, or number six, part two would be assessment of goal achievement. Do you remember we had those district goals and we had superintendent goals? So these would be the goals that we had set the prior year and how does a person do with them? And what are some of the specifics? Of course, we'd write out what those goals are. And then underneath you'd talk about how it was accomplished or not. And then part three would be planning for next year's goals and performance expectations. So you'd write out the goals here. And then part four would just be signatures. Some of you have probably seen something a lot like this with your work. You know, I've seen anything going from a blank form that you're supposed to fill out to something that has a whole, you know, matrix or whatever of all this kind of stuff. So it's um, that's where we're at so far. We'd love to hear input. And it's going to be up there. Anybody can make, when I say up there, it'll be in the Google Drive by tomorrow or, or the next day or so. And people can make comments. You can also email me with comments or suggestions. And I know our committee is trying, our task force is trying to get together next week, so we'll spend some more time. This is one of those things where it's, it's not the most fun thing for people to do. I mean, I like it because I'm a nerd, but most people don't. But I think it's really important that we do this and get it in place. So I know when you were talking about students might not want to listen to the whole meeting, I'm thinking, oh my gosh, here you are, here we are at the end of the meeting. I'm thinking there's probably a lot more people than just students that don't want to hear anymore. So hopefully this will give us something to think about and we can move along. So thank you. Anybody have anything to add from our task force before we go on?
Terry, can you, can you email?
Yes. Yes, I'd be happy to email it. To, I can send it out to everybody or just to Don? I can send it out to everybody in case people don't like it on their thing. I'll just send it out to everybody. Thank you. Peter, you want to?
Chris, uh, we've seen the uh, the board mission statement a couple of times now, and I think that the team is done updating it. I didn't know if you'd entertain a motion to uh, to approve that.
Absolutely.
So I'll make that motion to approve the Mississauga Valley School Board Mission Statement.
Uh, Peter's first, the second? Don's the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the MVSD mission statement? Raise your hand. Uh, motion carries eight. Okay, motion carries eight zero.
Thank you.
Chris, Terry, I know we'll be dialogue, but with the evaluation thing, as you put it forward, your stuff looks really good, but one thing I've seen is that the person receiving it, there's a place where they can comment. Like, they might want to respond to something that raises an issue because we had a lack of information. Or they may want to highlight it. So that's, that's the only thing that I've seen that it's not there. And I think you did an excellent job, your group did.
That'd be, that'll be great. That'll be easy to do right before the signatures. Unless you think of a better way.
Thank you. I think it's been and very collaborative um, all along the way. So it's been a, a good process so far.
Yes, it's great to have a task force. Thank you, everybody. And I will be a nudge about next week, so.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Uh, last for other business is the employee leave request. Uh, I believe we're going to want to have a finding for executive session, but Julie will touch on that.
Yeah, we definitely, um, we'd be speaking about something, medical needs, so.
Okay, so uh, the only thing else is, uh, our next meeting is November 3rd at 6:30. Once again, it'll be held virtually. Uh, I don't have any more comments. Does anybody else, before we have a motion to go into executive session? Seeing and hearing none, uh, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session at 8:30 uh, pertaining to an employee leave request. Terry's the first.
Do we need to invite?
Do we need to invite Julian?
Julian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Anyone else?
No, no one else. So the uh, motion is to go into executive session, 8:30, inviting Julian. All those in favor, raise your hand.
I, I didn't get that.
Megan's raising her hand, so the motion carried eight zero. Uh, first was, I didn't write it down.
Terry.
Sorry. Who was the first? Terry was the first and
I thought it was Megan that was the second question.
Maybe I didn't get a second. I'm rushing this. Who was uh, second?
I think it was Devin.
I think it was Devin.
I thought it was Devin too. Okay, so first was Terry, second was Devin. We just voted it passed eight zero. We are going to go into executive session. Thank you, everyone.